Call to order. It is six thirty PM on May twelfth, twenty twenty five, and this is the regular meeting of the Monroe Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Notice of this meeting was given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, and a copy was posted on the second floor bulletin board in Town Hall and on the Township's website. Please be advised, no new item of business will be started after ten thirty PM, and the meeting shall terminate no later than eleven PM. Please note, audio and video of this meeting is being recorded in accordance with ordinance fifty-six twenty twenty-four. This meeting is being broadcast at live on the Township's YouTube channel, and a link to view this meeting will be subsequently posted on the Township's website for the public to view at their convenience. Everyone please stand and salute the flag. Start with Mr. Kozak.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Carino is excused tonight. Mr. Colavita.
Here.
Mr. Kamisky.
Here.
Ms. Fizano.
Here.
Mr. Futter.
Here.
Mr. Hefner.
Here.
Mr. McGeehan.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Mr. Heverly is excused tonight. Mr. Fiore.
Here.
Mr. Warburton.
Here.
Ms. Pellegrini is excused.
Okay, oaths, Mr. Fiore?
Okay, just as it goes through the process of swearing in our professional, just state your name for the record. Adam Warburton. Okay, you swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, resolutions.
Okay, there's only three resolutions for memorialization this evening. The first is number fifteen dash twenty twenty-five Paul Hess, side yard variance was denied. The second resolution to choose to build it by blanket agenda would be number sixteen twenty twenty-five Thomas Starner, it's a side yard, rear yard, and lot coverage variance which was approved. And then finally is number seventeen twenty twenty-five Daniel Giusti, it's a lot coverage variance approval.
Members, your pleasure in regards to resolutions number fifteen through seventeen?
I should approve.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Okay, first on the agenda, application twenty-four dash fifty-four twelve sixty-seven Glassboro Road LLC, use variance. Can this application be deemed complete?
Yes.
Is there a motion to deem the application complete?
No move. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Mr. Schwartz?
Good evening. Leonard Schwartz, Law Carver, Slade and Schwartz, representing the applicant. This is the second hearing we'll set off the board.
Is it the second or are we starting correct?
Leonard, you're starting. It's a new application, correct?
Uh, I guess we, I guess it's.
Yeah, I would just suggest, because there's one or two board members that weren't here, I believe, when.
Oh, okay.
The first, at least, one gentleman at the end, but I don't know who else.
So we present everything from the.
I, I would suggest doing that, because it's been quite a while, Leonard, and I can't, I can barely remember your name, you know, so I'm sure the other board members do.
I can barely remember my names.
Okay. I would suggest starting from the beginning, I really would.
Okay, so let's get our, all of our experts sworn in.
Okay, all of you gentlemen, could just stand, just state your names for the record, and which firm you're with.
James Beegan from Sickles and Associates.
Brian Seidel, Seidel Planning and Design.
Rafael Booth, Allholders of the Property.
David Warner, Warner and Caner Associates, Traffic Engineer.
Okay, you all swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth this evening?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
With regard to this property, twelve sixty-seven Glassboro Road LLC, uh, when we were here previously in the previous hearing, uh, the previous hearing dealt with two variances. One was, uh, the use variance, uh, to allow, uh, non-age restricted, uh, townhouses to be built in an a, in a area which is, uh, residential age restricted zone. Uh, that application is, is still on for this evening. Uh, at the previous hearing, and, uh, our experts will go over all this, but the previous hearing, we also were asking for a variance with regard to the lot density, uh, so that we would be asking for, uh, ninety-five townhomes, uh, instead of the requirement allowance, the maximum was seventy-five? Seventy-three. Uh, so that, uh, that has been withdrawn, and we're now back to what, what is allowed under the ordinance. Uh, so we are at seventy-three instead of ninety-five, and from those seventy-three, eleven of them are, uh, are affordable. Uh, so we only have the one variance with regard to the use variance. There are, uh, as we will go over, uh, there are numerous variances, uh, that exist, uh, that were pointed out by your plan or engineer, uh, but those basically are site plan, uh, requirements, should we get the approval, uh, at this point. Those are items that, once we re-engineer the, uh, plan, uh, those side yard, rear yard, uh, buffers, et cetera, would all be part of the site, site plan requirements. The only other one that we do feel is prob, probably unnecessary is the requirement is for a minimum lot acreage of, uh, twenty, uh, acres. Uh, we are asking for nineteen point six. So I think that that probably is one that should be considered, uh, this evening, uh, as part of what we're applying for here. As I said, the others, uh, we have no objection to, uh, should we get approval, approval for this part of it, that, uh, all the other variances we put in as part of, uh, future, uh, realignment and final, uh, site plan approval. Uh, with that, uh, as you said, uh, you want this to, uh, be dealt with as, uh, new, so let's have, uh, Mr. Beck, uh, stand up, explain exactly what we're, we're proposing.
And just for the record, he was already, uh, offered as an expert, accepted by the board?
Correct.
Where was I going to say this? It's probably better over there. Oh, yeah.
You can't see that, can you?
Yeah, I can see.
You can't even see that.
Yeah.
Does it come out?
Okay. Okay. Sure.
Thank you. Yes, so again, my name is Jim Beegan from Sickles and Associates, and the site civil engineer that's worked on the project. And, uh, as you can see, the property is kind of an irregular, uh, shaped, uh, almost a flag lot in a way. Uh, it does have a enough area or enough of a width just along Route three twenty-two for an access, um, but there's not enough room really to develop that portion of the site. So the entire stem that comes off of, uh, uh, off of the Glassboro-Williams Town Road, uh, is really non-developable, other than just for a boulevard entranceway which we're showing on there. And then from there, we've got a P-loop, uh, with townhouse, uh, development that, as we're proposing. Now, uh, right now, we are proposing seventy-three units, which meets the, um, the current zoning, um, in the zone for, uh, three point seven five units per acre. Uh, so that's the number of units on there. Now, uh, of that, fifteen percent would be set aside for low and moderate income housing, uh, for, for your affordable housing obligation. Uh, and that's, fifteen percent is eleven units, so eleven of the seventy-three would be affordable units. These are townhouse units, they're two stories, uh, with a garage and a driveway in front of them. Um, we would meet the residential site improvement standards in terms of the amount of parking. Besides the two parking spaces in front of each house, we do have additional parking at, um, at, uh, several different, um, parking areas throughout the site. Um, that there could be some parking there. Uh, we would have to comply with the EV parking spaces and the handicap, the number of handicap parking spaces also. This is, is, once again, it's, it's just a concept, uh, in terms of the layout, it's not a fully designed site plan, we do have a lot of work to do if there is any approval in terms of what we're looking for, and that is the removal of the age restriction on there. The intent is to, at this point, is to, um, meet the, uh, the, um, zoning as much as you can in terms of the, you know, the townhouse setback requirements and bulk requirements, but there are some things that would have to be worked out with, with that also before we, uh, we actually make an applica, make an application. Um, the tract also, it, as it is right now, it is twenty acres, uh, well, twenty acres is what's required.
Notice of this meeting was given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act and a copy was posted on the second floor bulletin board in Town Hall and on the Township's website. Please be advised, no new item of business will be started after 10:30 PM and the meeting shall terminate no later than 11:00 PM. Please note, audio and video of this meeting is being recorded in accordance with ordinance 56-2024. This meeting is being broadcast at live on the Township's YouTube channel and a link to view this meeting will be subsequently posted on the Township's website for the public to view at their convenience. Everyone please stand and salute the flag. Start with Mr. Kozak.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Carrino is excused tonight. Mr. Colavita.
Here.
Mr. Kamisky.
Here.
Ms. Fizano.
Here.
Mr. Futter.
Here.
Mr. Hefner.
Here.
Mr. McGeehan.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Mr. Heverly is excused tonight. Mr. Fiore.
Here.
Mr. Warburton.
Here.
Ms. Pellegrini is excused.
Okay, oaths, Mr. Fiore?
Okay, just as it goes through the process of swearing in our professional, just state your name for the record. Adam Warburton. Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions.
Okay, there's only three resolutions for memorialization this evening. The first is number fifteen dash twenty twenty-five, Paul Hess, side yard variance was denied. The second resolution to choose to build it by blanket agenda would be number sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Thomas Starner, it's a side yard, rear yard and lot coverage variance which was approved. And then finally is number seventeen, twenty twenty-five, Daniel Giusti, it's a lot coverage variance approval.
Members, your pleasure in regards to resolutions, number fifteen through seventeen?
I should approve.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, first on the agenda, application twenty-four dash fifty-four, twelve sixty-seven Glassboro Road LLC, use variance. Can this application be deemed complete?
Yes.
Is there a motion to deem the application complete?
No move.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Schwartz?
Good evening, Leonard Schwartz, Law, Carver, Slade, and Schwartz representing the applicant. This is the second hearing we'll set off the board.
The second or are we starting correct?
Leonard, you're starting. It's a new application, correct?
Uh, I guess we, I guess it's...
You're gonna have to review all the testimony that was...
Yeah, I would just suggest, because there's one or two board members that weren't here, I believe, when...
Oh, okay.
The first, at least, and one gentleman at the end, but I don't know who else.
So we present everything from the...
I, I would suggest doing that, because it's been quite a while, Leonard, and I can't, I can barely remember your name, you know? So, I'm sure the other board members do, but...
I can barely remember my names.
Okay. I would suggest starting from the beginning, I really would.
Okay, so let's get our, all of our experts sworn in.
Okay, all of you gentlemen could just stand, just state your names for the record and what firm you're with.
James Beegan from Sickles and Associates.
Brian Seidel, Seidel Planning and Design.
Rafael Booth, Old House of Property.
David Warner, Warner and Canter Associates, Traffic Engineer.
Okay, y'all swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth this evening?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
With regard to this property, twelve sixty-seven Glassboro Road LLC, uh, when we were here previously in the previous hearing, uh, the previous hearing dealt with two variances. One was, uh, the use variance, uh, to allow, uh, non-age restricted, uh, townhouses to be built in an a, in a area which is, uh, residential age restricted zone. Uh, that application is, is still on for this evening. At the previous hearing, and, uh, our experts will go over all this, but the previous hearing, we also were asking for a variance with regard to the lot density, uh, so that we would be asking for, uh, ninety-five townhomes, uh, instead of the requirement allowance, the maximum was seventy-five? Seventy-three. Uh, so that, uh, that has been withdrawn and we're now back to what, what is allowed under the ordinance. Uh, so we are at seventy-three instead of ninety-five, and from those seventy-three, eleven of them are, uh, are affordable. Uh, so, we only have the one variance with regard to the use variance. There are, uh, as we will go over, uh, there are numerous variances, uh, that exist, uh, that were pointed out by, by your planner engineer, uh, but those basically are site plan, uh, requirements, should we get the approval, uh, at this point. Those are items that, once we re-engineer the, uh, plan, uh, those side yard, rear yard, uh, buffers, et cetera, would all be part of the site, site plan requirements. The only other one that we do feel is prob, probably unnecessary is the requirement is for, uh, minimum lot acreage of, uh, twenty, uh, acres, uh, we are asking for nineteen point six. So, I think that that probably is one that should be considered, uh, this evening, uh, as part of what we're applying for here. And I said, the others, uh, we have no objection to, uh, should we get approval, approval for this part of it, that, uh, all the other variances put in as part of, uh, future, uh, preliminary and final, uh, site plan approval. Uh, with that, uh, as you said, uh, you want this to, uh, be dealt with as new, so let's have, uh, Mr. Beck, uh, stand up, explain exactly what we're, we're proposing.
And just for the record, he was already, uh, offered as an expert, accepted by the board.
Correct.
Where was I going to say this?
It's probably better over there.
Yeah, I can see it.
Does it come out?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, so again, my name is Jim Beegan from Sickles and Associates and, uh, Site Civil Engineer, has worked on the project. And, uh, as you can see, the property is kind of an irregular, uh, shaped, uh, almost a flag lot in a way. Uh, it does have a, enough area or enough of a, a width just along Route three twenty-two for an access, um, but there's not enough room really to develop that portion of the site. So the entire stem that comes off of, uh, uh, off of the Glassboro-Williams Town Road, uh, is really non-developable, other than just for a boulevard entranceway, which we're shown on there. And then from there, we've got a P-loop, uh, with townhouse, uh, development that, as we're proposing. Now, uh, right now, we are proposing seventy-three units, which meets the, um, the current zoning, um, in the zone for, uh, three point seven five units per acre. Uh, so that's the number of units on there. Now, uh, of that, fifteen percent would be set aside for low and moderate income housing, uh, for, for your affordable housing obligation, uh, and that's, fifteen percent is eleven units. So eleven of the seventy-three would be affordable units. These are townhouse units, they're two stories, uh, with a garage and a driveway in front of them. Um, we would meet the residential site improvement standards in terms of the amount of parking. Besides the two parking spaces in front of each house, we do have additional parking at, um, at, uh, several different, um, uh, parking areas throughout the site, um, that there could be some parking there. Uh, we would have to comply with the EV parking spaces and the handicap, the number of handicap parking spaces also. This is, is, once again, it's, it's just a concept, uh, in terms of the layout, it's not a fully designed site plan. We do have a lot of work to do if there is any approval in terms of what we're looking for, and that is the removal of the age restriction on there. The intent is to, at, at this point, is to, um, meet the, uh, the, um, uh, zoning as much as you can in terms of the, you know, the townhouse setback requirements and bulk requirements, but there are some things that would have to be worked out with, with that also before we, uh, we actually make an applica, make an application. The tract also, it, as it is right now, it is twenty acres, uh, well, twenty acres is what's required to develop under the current zoning on this property. We have nineteen point six acres, uh, on this property right now. Um, so, it is, uh, you know, de minimis exception from twenty acres, uh, but it is a variance nonetheless, and no matter what, if anything is developed under the current zoning, uh, that variance would be needed also. Uh, it doesn't depend on the layout or anything like that, it's just part of the, the property the way it is right now. Um, there are, the property is outside of any flood zones, the flood zones are to, uh, the east, um, where there is a branch of the, uh, the Island Brook, there's a hundred year flood plain and wetlands that are off the site. There are some, uh, wetlands and buffers that come off of the site, we would have to get a letter of interpretation for that, uh, from the DEP, and we would have to meet any and all, uh, New Jersey DEP regulations if there is any disturbance to wetlands for, uh, head walls or, uh, anything like, uh, transmission of runoff from our stormwater basins. Right now, we do show, uh, several different areas for stormwater basins on the property, and, uh, they will be designed in accordance with your ordinance and the New Jersey DEP requirements, uh, for stormwater. Uh, they each will be addressing water quality and water quantity as well as recharge. Uh, uh, there would be sanitary sewer and water that would be, um, uh, would be servicing the site. Currently, the, the sewer, uh, we do have a application that is pending at the, uh, the Monroe Municipal Utilities Authority, uh, for that, just for preliminary approval from them. Um, and, uh, that said, if there's, there's any questions, that's just the, the layout as is, as I said, seventy-three townhouse units that we have.
Subject to, uh, with adjustments that they made, uh, the same basic layout applies, whether we were dealing with age restricted or we're dealing with the non-age restricted, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's all I have to move from our engineer.
Members of the board have any questions? Okay, go ahead, Leonard.
Okay. Uh, Brian, I want to hear. Leonard will cover with you the, uh, performance with regard to use variance.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, previously was qualified in front of this board, does anybody need me to go through qualifications?
No, you're good.
All right, thank you. Uh, so again, Brian Seidel, professional planner, um, reviewed the application, you heard the information from the engineer here. Uh, variances that we're requesting are the, to remove the age restriction requirement and, uh, to allow the non-conforming tract area to continue. Uh, the twenty acre requirement where the site is currently at nineteen point six two acres. Uh, site is located in the RA Residential Age Restricted District. The district does permit, uh, RA district does permit the non-age restricted housing that's being requested here this evening. While there are regulations for age qualified, it does specifically point out in the intent of the district, section one seventy-five, one sixty-two, one A, the RA district shall permit the construction of new, non-age restricted housing or the expansion of non-age restricted housing. Um, so in, it indicates that in the intent itself. It also goes on in reading through the design standards and the additional standards for residential developments, there's a specific section that says identify standards for age restricted developments, while the previous sections are, uh, identified for any uses in the district. So as part of the use variance, we have to go back and look through the master plan, the reexamination reports, uh, to understand the, the history and how this regulation got here. And what we did is we went back and basically started at the two thousand four master plan, which established the RA Residential Age Restricted District, which is intended to meet the needs of the township's older population. In the two thousand seven, two thousand eight reexamination reports, uh, the master plan started discussing affordable housing, age restricted communities, and established a senior care district. In the two thousand ten reexamination report, the opinion started to change, uh, with less importance on the age restricted communities. Uh, it did indicate that's the intent of this reexamination to create an opportunity for development that while not age restricted, or I'm sorry, not restricted by age, targets a population of retired individuals and younger first-time home buyers. The two thousand twelve reexamination report, uh, was indicated new residents moving into the township and existing residents moving within the township have not enjoyed a variety of housing choices with the residential growth. Most of the new construction has been of single-family detached homes, the township understands the importance of a diverse housing stock, which I think goes to the townhome style unit that's being proposed here and diversifying that housing stock. Uh, current information, current census data still increase indicates an older aging population, uh, indicates up to forty percent of the population is over age fifty, however, the regulations have evolved to now incorporate diversity of housing options and a mix of uses to encourage a variety of age groups, income levels and housing, uh, to live together in a community rather than segregating into a separate age restricted community. Uh, so I do believe the application meets the positive criteria, the site is particularly suited for the use, designated as a residential zoning district where townhomes are specifically permitted and contemplated as a permitted use, surrounded by a variety of non, uh, non-age qualified residential uses, and will be developed in accordance with the standards for the attached dwellings. Uh, variance will advance the purpose of zoning and enhance the general welfare, supports the master plan goal of providing wider variety of housing affordable to a larger spectrum of households, and will advance the purpose of zoning, particularly purposes A, to guide the appropriate use of land, to promote appropriate population densities, and provide space and appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses. The application that's being proposed, really no net, negative detriment to the public good. Um, access to the proposed community is coming from Route three twenty-two, uh, so it's not creating new traffic going through another residential community. Uh, there's no increase to the proposed density above the underlying zoning district and what is currently permitted. Uh, community will be screened by mature vegetation that will be preserved around the perimeter. Uh, no detriment to the zoning plan or the zoning ordinance. Again, it's important to understand and, and recognize that the intent of the district does permit non-residential, or I'm sorry, non-age qualified residential development. And while housing will not be restricted to an age qualified community or, uh, resident, it will certainly be open and available to those individuals. Uh, it's also consistent with the identified trend in the master plan for bringing a variety of uses and income levels and age groups together within mixed-use type of developments. So in conclusion, I believe it's a great use for the property, again, consistent with the residential zoning of the property and the density and the unit type that's being proposed. The only deviation is the non-age qualified restriction, uh, that the RA district provides, which is specifically contemplated as a permitted use in the RA district. Uh, variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan or the zoning ordinance, and I believe the proofs for the approval of the variance are warranted.
Members of the board have any questions for the, um, professional? Adam, would you like for their last professional to go up? Can, continue? Okay.
Yes.
Leonard, your next professional?
I came with a traffic engineer.
The traffic engineer?
I'm, I'm gonna do that also, I, I just wanted to bring Mr. Bood up to explain, I know before there was, there were questions with regard to, uh, uh, his attempts to find other, other types of, uh, builders, uh, for the age restricted as well as for, uh, the, uh, we're applying the non-age restricted, uh, and you were a lot of, had a lot of concerns about him making contact with various, uh, developers, uh, to see what, uh, feedback he'd get from them. He had been doing that over these, these past moments, and I wanted him to explain to the board what his attempts have been and what he's found out in his contact with the various, uh, builders.
Leonard, would you agree, Mr. Schwartz, that last time we got sidetracked for probably fifteen, twenty minutes, if not a half hour regarding crossing the bike path, not crossing the bike path, that's not an issue? Correct, there's no, if you remember, there was an issue discussing about crossing the bike path at some point in time in the future? I believe the members of the board were here, we were talking about that, all right? That's not gonna be discussed, that's not an issue here, that's not part of the application. I just don't want to get sidetracked.
So we're, we're only here, right, for making it an age restricted to non-age restricted?
Non-age, non-age restricted development for this development...
So let's just stick to that, if, if, if it's anything other than that, it's not necessary?
Right, and, and the concern that, that you did have at that, if I recall, I mean...
Yeah, but that's different, right? We're starting new now, I just want to stick to why, why we're here.
No, he's just gonna provide testimony about his talking to other realtors and developers, and then the reason that it was tabled was because of the traffic issue, because of the increased density, and that's why it was adjourned, and you brought your traffic expert in, but that may not even be an issue because it's permitted in that zone, at least a number of units are, the density is permitted.
Right.
Okay, okay, I just want to, hopefully I didn't confuse everybody.
Yeah, we're good.
We'll stay on track. We have the traffic engineer here. Very good, okay.
To deal with that. I, I wasn't jumping over the traffic engineer, I just wanted to bring Mr. Bood in to explain with regard to your contacts with the various, uh, developers.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Um, we have, I have spoke with many different developers, big companies, and most of them telling me that they prefer to have free market because they have more options to get better pricing on the unit. Our problem with this, uh, site, with this property is because we have a very long road that leads into the development, and that's increasing the cost per unit, and that's the reason why we are asking for variance from age restricted to the free market. This is the main reason why we ask it. Other than that, we will try to do it as before with ninety-eight, uh, townhomes, but, um, but it will be age restricted. So we try to reduce the number of the units, and out of it, eleven unit is, um, affordable, so really, the whole number's coming down, but we need to get it into the free market in order for the developers, people that will build it, will be able to make, uh, a profitable project.
The developers you've talked to, uh, agree with you that, uh, this number...
Yeah, there's several of them, I can mention, there are Hortons, uh, there is, um, Penions, and some others that we spoke with, and all of them telling us the same thing.
And they were satisfied that they would be able to, uh, develop this property with the number that we're asking for, that, not age...
Well, yeah, it's like the minimal.
Minimal, okay, okay.
Members of the board have any questions for the applicant, or can Mr. Schwartz pause the next professional? Seeing none, continue, Mr. Schwartz.
I believe he's testified in, not before this board, but other boards throughout the state and the planning board probably.
I, I have, yes. Again, for the record, my name is Dave Warner, Principal in the firm of Warner and Canter Associates, Traffic Engineer, licensed professionally in the state of New Jersey, and it is current and in good standing. And I have testified before this township in the past, uh, not related to the prior application for this applicant, but, uh, and for various municipalities in the state.
Okay, continue.
Thank you. Um, so we, we were asked to prepare a report, uh, to evaluate the traffic impact of this as a non-age restricted development, and the purpose of why that's important is to present you, the board, with information as to whether there be any traffic detriment to allowing or to, to granting the use variance. Um, we actually did the report based on ninety-eight units when it was a prior application, prior proposal, um, but my conclusions are obviously the same and slightly better based on seventy-three units. So, um, what we found was, uh, the traffic generation for a seventy-three unit, non-age restricted townhouse community, generate approximately forty trips in the morning peak hour and about forty-seven to fifty trips in the afternoon peak hour. We then superimposed that to see what kind of impact that would have on three twenty-two, and we also looked at the adjacent signalized intersections to the west Frysmill Road, to the east Tuckahoe Road, uh, just to see what kind of impact those forty to fifty peak hour trips would have on those intersections. The answer is, it's a minimal impact. The level of service, the level of operation of those intersections does not change when you add in the traffic from this development. We also looked at the access driveway that would be proposed, uh, out to Route three twenty-two, uh, it would be envisioned to be a single entry lane, a single exit lane, um, it would comply with RSI standards, it would be stop controlled and on a traffic signal, um, and it would have to be, we know, approved by, uh, New Jersey Department of Transportation ultimately, and this applicant would be subject to whatever they would require at that driveway. But based on our analysis, the operation of that driveway is also what we consider acceptable level of service. I'm sure this board's familiar with that term, in terms of traffic engineering. Level of service is essentially a grading system, and anything A, B, C, or D is considered to be acceptable operation, and when you get into level of service E or F, that's when it starts to be problematic. We found that this driveway would operate at level of service C, which is an acceptable condition, DOT would find it to be acceptable, um, and we believe there'd be no issues with that operation. Um, just for a point of reference perhaps, we looked at the intersection of Justin Way, uh, Residential Street, just to the, uh, west of this development. Um, the operation of that intersection, well, in terms of volume, that intersection in terms of in and out to Justin Way is in the range of about sixty-five to ninety vehicles in the peak hour, where this development proposed would be forty to fifty, so just in order of magnitude. The operation of Justin Way in the peak hours is a level of service C or D depending on the peak hour. Um, so just for a point of reference. So the conclusion is that in terms of the use variance, uh, this traffic can be accommodated, it won't cause problems on the, on three twenty-two, it won't cause problems at the adjacent intersections, uh, understanding that it has to go through all the required approvals, including NJDOT ultimately for the access. So we happen to answer any questions.
Members of the board have any questions?
It's Jared. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
On, for the, as far as the driveway's concerned, from a traffic engineering standpoint of view, do you feel that there should be a deceleration lane on three twenty-two to make the turn into the project? The reason I say that is there are other developments that don't have a deceleration lane that people end up pulling onto the shoulder just to get over and make the turn. So, I'm just asking, like, from an engineering point of view, has that been considered?
Uh, there, there are actually warrants for whether a deceleration lane would be warranted. Based on our analysis to date, a deceleration would not be warranted. It's basically determined by speed of traffic, the amount of traffic, uh, through traffic on three twenty-two, and the amount of right turn traffic. Because the right turn inbound traffic would be relatively low, it doesn't meet the warrants. However, it's really up to NJDOT, they have the discretion to say, hey, we believe a deceleration lane would make it safer and would be recommended, and then this developer would have to, uh, abide by that.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions?
No further questions.
And no, any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
When dealing with, as with use variance, we're talking about the non-age restricted, uh, traffic versus the age restricted traffic. How much difference is there?
The, the age restricted traffic for seventy-three units would be in the range, I didn't evaluate it in detail, it'd be in the range of about fifteen to twenty-five trips, as opposed to the forty to fifty trips for this development. So it would be higher for non-age restricted, understandably so.
Is it gonna, that, that forty's, you're saying it's not gonna have any impact?
Co, correct, I mean, anytime you add a trip, there's some impact, but in terms of adversely, no, no adverse impact.
Okay, so you don't see the adverse effect if the board were to grant the use variance or, or non-age...
or non-age restricted?
I do not, from a traffic perspective.
Okay, thank you. That's all that we have in terms of our presentation.
Okay. So, we're going to go with Adam now, he's going to give his report, and just have your professionals on standby to answer any concerns. Okay. Okay, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we heard tonight, the use variance is now going from the density with the actual use variance, to just the use variance to construct all age, rather than the age restricted townhomes in this community. Just going through, just to put it on the record, the conditions that are applying to make this actually fall into a use variance, Section one-seventy-five, one-sixty-two-point-one E-one states that permanent resident shall be at least fifty-five years of age, except that a spouse may occupy the unit together with his or her spouse who is at least fifty-five years of age. So, that provision kind of sets in motion the need for the use variance that we're hearing here tonight. The special reasons that the applicant testified to, I do agree with the positive criteria and the negative criteria. The RA district in this area is becoming almost orphaned, if you will. The R-two surrounds it, even in the BP zone across the street, there's a lot of old residential neighborhoods that are in this area, so this wouldn't be a far cry from what's, you know, conforming with the general nature of this area, this portion of Glassboro Road. Going into a little bit of the units themselves, seventy-three, we do have the fifteen percent requirement for the affordable units, that's the eleven units. We are currently working on a plan for the fourth round of affordable housing, all towns need to meet their requirements, we have cutoff of June thirtieth to complete that plan. These would go towards possibly meeting that next round obligation, where it's be approved and go through. That is something that is required, that's not something that we can kind of get away from, and we do have a very sizable requirement for this upcoming round to meet. We would ask, obviously, that the traffic report is updated, just in speaking on that, updated to reflect the seventy-three units and the impacts when it comes to site plan. The bulk variance for the minimum tract area, I don't have any opposition to granting that variance tonight, I think correctly stated, whether it's this or another development, the tract size is going to stay the same, the nineteen-point-six-two, whereas twenty acres is required. I believe that can be granted. I would agree with the applicant, I don't believe that any other bulk variances should be granted tonight, there is subject to site plan change and things like that, so I believe we leave all those be, except for the minimum tract area, if you so choose to grant that. I do not see any detriment to granting that, obviously, it's an existing, pre-existing nonconforming condition, which they're not exacerbating in any way. Moving down into Section four of my letter, "The layout and design of the residential age restricted development shall create a recognizable community center that encourages protection of traffic and circulation." There is a decent circulation, there's still a lot of sidewalks along here and things like that, I would like to see a little bit more interconnect, being that the bike path is so close, if we're going over to all age, there should be a little bit more connection into that bike path, that is an open space area in town, so the residents of this community should be able to access that easily. One thing I noted, there's a couple parking lots in here, there could be a direct access to kind of cut through, that can all be handled at site plan, but that's more along the lines of what we want to see out of site plan application. Architecturals, would the applicant agree, obviously, architectural is going to be provided at site plan?
Yes.
We heard a little bit of testimony tonight about the sanitary sewer situation in the MUA, it sounds like there's an application currently in with the MUA, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. A homeowners association is going to be created as a result of this development, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you're acknowledging private residential swimming pools, utility sheds, and other accessory buildings are specifically prohibited?
Correct.
Fencing shall not be permitted unless required and/or approved by the board?
Correct.
No storage of boats, trailers, campers shall be permitted on any individual residential lot?
Correct.
We spoke, going down into Section five, we spoke a little bit about the affordable housing, some of the impact evaluation standards, we spoke about traffic generation, the capacity of sewer and water, which is going to be decided upon by the MUA, and keeping in the light air recreation visual enjoyment, they have provided recreation areas, which I'll talk about in a second here. One thing either your planner or your engineer can speak to is the fiscal impacts, we want to hear a little bit more about that, if you would, just what you anticipated, are you anticipating kids, or anticipating large impact on the township from a fiscal perspective?
Sure, to address the fiscal impacts, a lot of things that go into a fiscal review, the local taxes, school taxes, when we looked at this without a increase of density above what is permitted, there's really no change to local tax or impacts on the township perspective. Just heard agreeing to be a homeowners association privately serviced roadways here, so limited impacts from a local perspective, from age qualified versus non-age qualified. The biggest impact on is the school district, or the impact on the school district. So, that, we did a detailed review and evaluation of that, and while it's indicated, this is, you know, the bigger component, because of age qualified versus non-age qualified, it's really not as substantial as you might think. When we, when we looked at everything, values of the property, with the appropriate multipliers, looking at and accounting for the age qualified units that are proposed here, we'd be looking at, we believe, twenty-four school age students. We did look at the school district, the current school district for Monroe Township Public Schools, equated that to a cost per student, and excluding the state aid that's received here, and again, the tax revenue that would be received from seventy-three units with only twenty-four schoolchildren, basically results in a positive fiscal impact of ninety-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars that we've calculated to the school district.
Thank you very much. I think that's good, Leonard, that's what we're looking for, is just the fiscal impact.
Adam, just so we're clear, you're referencing your letter of May fifth, May eighth, twenty-twenty-five, correct?
That is correct.
Just going to mark that as Monroe Township Board One, for the purposes of the record. Thank you.
Just to finish up going into Section C, the natural environmental standards, landscape buffer strips of at least fifty feet in depth, including trees, hedges, shall be provided in different types of land use on the perimeter of the site. There's open space requirements that need to be followed as well, and all environmentally sensitive areas, the wetlands on the site, shall be incorporated into the common open space system. The recreation in the open space areas, I have a comment in here that I believe, looking at the plan, the recreation area is in the northern corner of the property, I know there was some discussion, conversations with the engineer, that the recreation area was discussed before, and we can handle that at time of site plan, but just finding that interconnection is what we are searching for. I will let everybody know that there is an ordinance that's currently being introduced to create a hundred-foot setback off any open space areas, that does include the bike trail. Right now, we are only showing a fifty-foot buffer on this property, so it's just something to be aware of, come site plan, the hundred-foot buffer, maybe enacted off that, if that ordinance is in fact passed. Just something to keep in mind.
I think that, I have discussed that with our engineer, and we will work with the town. Jim, I believe you indicated that if we have to adjust that buffer in the back, there's room to adjust the homes and bring in the new buffer area.
Very good. The monument sign, nothing's proposed right now, I'm assuming that'll come at site plan, correct?
Yes.
And you agree that you will comply with all applicable open space and recreational requirements at the time of site plan application?
Yes.
And obviously, Section six, the fees and contributions, section is self-explanatory, and you agree to all those contributions and fees, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Again, on the positive side and the negative side, there really isn't a negative impact here, it's a residential community, it's proposed, it's all age from age restricted, the age restricted is sort of fading, there is a need for all age housing in the state of New Jersey, we're currently in a shortage, and this neighborhood would go to contributing to that, meeting that need, and as well as, obviously, the affordables are needed for the township in general, so. That pretty much concludes what I need, Mr. Chairman.
Members of the board have any questions for Adam?
I have one question for Adam. It says, "No storage of boats, trailers, and campers shall be permitted on the individual residential lot." What about the general parking areas?
I would say no, they should not be in the general parking areas at all, and I believe the applicant would agree to that.
Yes.
But that would all be handled at site plan?
At site plan, absolutely.
But you brought it up, that's why I was asking.
No, absolutely, and that should be, you know, on record, that it's taken care of now, even if they're coming back for site plan.
That is all.
That's it? Any more questions?
Mr. Chairman. Adam, was I correct when I heard the planner for the applicant, when we talked about school age children on site, was the number twenty-four, is that what he said? Is that what the testimony was?
That is correct.
Out of seventy-eight, or seventy-two proposed locations?
That's correct.
Of non-age restricted property?
Correct. Unfortunately, I mean, you know, people have betted everything, but unfortunately, costs are rising. It's, I don't think it's any secret to anybody that people are not able to afford having kids, unfortunately. Costs of housing, costs of food are rising. Twenty-four, I tend to agree with, these are townhomes, they're not anybody looking to, you know, raise a family of four or anything like that, it's more for maybe the thirty-year-old or thirty-five-year-old who wants to move in with a significant other, and they want to live in the town, ask for...
Or first-time home buyers.
Or first-time homeowner, absolutely, and we know there's plenty of them out there right now looking for places to live.
Oh, I got you. I was just, that number seemed just a little bit low to me, but, okay, if you're satisfied, I'm good.
Not only that, but we're starting to see, not in Monroe Township specifically, I'm not exactly sure if there is, but score rates are beginning to drop off, so enrollments, new people coming into schools are beginning to drop off, so we are seeing that trend.
Okay, thanks, Adam. No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any more questions for Adam? Mr. Schwartz?
Adam, do you need to go over the traffic review letter of February seventh?
No, I think what was presented is sufficient, we would just ask for it, obviously, we updated at site plan to reflect the current number of townhomes that are now proposed.
Sir, that's February seventh, twenty-twenty-five, letter of Congress, if you wanted to mark that as... We could run NTCB two. CB two. And also, Leonard, did you want to mark your, everybody has a smaller version of that plan as applicant one, for the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Schwartz, can you have one of your professionals move that map to the public and see, so behind the podium, but facing that way, so everyone could see it?
Yes.
Chairman, if you don't mind, could I go back and ask Adam a question?
Yes.
I believe that we heard their planner testify that non-age restricted is permitted in the RA zone?
The way that the ordinance reads makes provision under the intense section that can be interpreted that way. Specifically, though, there are, there are conditions underneath of the RA zone that limit it to fifty-five and older residents.
Okay, so that was his interpretation, not...
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. That's all the testimony that we have.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion open to the public?
So moved.
A second. Holes of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on behalf of Application twenty-four-dash-fifty-four? Please step off to the microphone.
You have to state your name for the record, sir?
David Henderson.
Okay, and raise your right hand, please. Swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And also your address as well, Mr. Henderson.
Twelve fifty-one Glassboro Road. I have a hard time believing that minimum traffic impact. If anybody has traveled three-twenty-two, whether you're going east or west at three o'clock to five o'clock, from seven in the morning to nine, you are backed up, whether the intersection gets finished or not, Tuckahoe Road, you're backed up to the township yard in the evening. I have a very hard time believing that, it's minimal impact, so. Second of all, a variance, what is a variance? A variance is, you look it up, for somebody with a hardship, and not to be granted for somebody for financial gain. What do we have here? We have something that is approved, we're just trying to financially gain somebody, not, none of you guys, not me, not the township. If we have to have the Kowa fifty-five and older, I couldn't afford to live in a fifty-five and older development, why don't we have affordable housing in the fifty-five and older developments? Is that something possible? I don't know. Anybody know? I don't know.
We're not here to answer questions, the public are speaking, your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Adam Enders, twelve sixty-six Glassboro Road, twenty-five-year resident, in the name of this good man.
Raise your right hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Good.
All right. Should I repeat what I said, or am I good?
No.
Okay, does anybody here live on Glassboro Road between...
We're not here to answer questions.
Just give us your opinion.
So, again, the traffic is horrendous, right? So, they, Justin Commons made it worse, there's been four accidents this year, I believe one of them was fatal, I'm not really sure about that, though. They're building the blaze down the road, which is going to be on Glassboro Road, also entering the road. The road, I believe, is seventy-five feet wide, I could be wrong about that. I have a neighbor across the street from me who lives in the rental house on this property right now, when they pull in, they almost hit the tree in my front yard, I'm forty feet off the road. So, it seems like when we're talking about this, the older houses, we want to bring newer ones in, we kind of forget about the people that are there. Twenty-five years I've been on this road, right? Raised my family here. What's a shame is that we only look at this, right? So, here, I'm just going to show you where I live, so I'm going to be, if they built this, I'm right here. That puts possibly a traffic light, an acceleration lane, where's that going to come from? The front of their property, or the front of my property? Right? It's also going to cut into Henderson's, I'm sure. So, as far as this study that's been done, I don't know what they spent, one day, two days, all right, I'm asking that question to say, but most likely, they didn't put the time in. If you want to know a study, you could ask the people that live there. I don't think we need this development at all. Twenty-five years I've been here, I've watched it grow, and things grow, and things change, it's understandable, but it's really sad, because if I go to cut my front yard, I have to wear blaze orange, put cones out, maybe even have like the shuttles there, just to watch the cars from hitting me. There is no control over what's going on with the road, unfortunately, right now, people are out of control, the Justin Commons traffic is out of control, there's really no lane for them to pull in or out, so it is, it's a pretty big mess, and I hope you guys hear this concern, because I'd like to stay here and, you know, finish out my time in Monroe Township, but it just keeps packing up, so. Definitely, as far as this traffic study is concerned, I'd be out there, really, doing real work, they might have been out there for a day or two, and said, okay, this is good, let's put some numbers to it, but it's not true. I mean, it's already out of control, like Dave was saying earlier, if I go to pull out my driveway in the morning and make that right towards Frysmill Road, it'll be backed up all the way to the bridge, right? All the way to the bridge, it may be even further, it's back to Joseph's, so I can't go that way, now I got to go left, they just put that wah-wah in, and now that's backed up, like beside the township yard. It's a seventy-five foot wide road, so I don't see how I can handle even this, you know, and why they want the variance, makes no sense to me, just more money, so. All right, I hope you guys heard me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the reference.
Jessica Johnston, twelve sixty-six Glassboro Road.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
So, I know they've all harped on the traffic that's been going on, and I do kind of want to reiterate that a little bit. When I leave for work at six-thirty in the morning, it sometimes takes me three, four minutes to pull out of my driveway, that is not an exaggeration. When I came home last week, I come down Frysmill Road, I make a left into three-twenty-two, traffic was backed up to Scotland Run, and I sat there for six minutes to go point four miles. I keep track, because every day, sometimes it's three minutes, sometimes it's four minutes, six minutes to go point four miles. I think whether they redo that intersection or not, this traffic is going to be, just, it just keeps compounding. I do have a hard time believing... I do have a hard time believing that it's only going to be forty trips per unit for these seventy-four units that are coming in. According to the twenty twenty-three survey from the Harris Poll for Bloomberg, forty-five percent of the people from eighteen to twenty-nine still live at home. And then from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, more than sixty percent of Gen Z millennials moved back home. So you're telling me that there's only going to be forty extra truck, car trips that come out of that development? Not to mention, like Adam just stated, our house is directly across the street from this driveway, so now we're going to be getting forty sets of headlights coming in and out, shining directly at my house, shining in my dining room and my kitchen while I'm sitting there trying to watch TV. That's not really fair for us to now be bombarded with all of these extra trips that are now shining into my house. You know, that's all I really have to say, I guess.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public wish to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Michael Liucci calling, twelve seventy-one Glassboro Road, Catarina Supply.
Swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely. We're just concerned about, obviously, traffic, we have a lot of deliveries going in and out all day, plus buffer in the back of the property directly against us, so there are concerns, but again, traffic's going to be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeking on this motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second. Holes of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Mr. Pure? Okay, just to summarize the application before the board this evening, it's application number twenty-four fifty-four, twelve sixty-seven Glassboro Road LLC. The applicant is seeking a use variant to allow non-age restricted townhomes to be built in the residential age restricted zone, along with any other variances or waivers that are deemed necessary, more specifically, the, to allow the non-conforming tract, right now it's currently nine, nineteen point six acres where it was required under the code to be twenty acres. As part of the board's consideration, there was testimony provided by the professionals on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant himself, there was also testimony from our board planner, Mr. Warburton, he testified specifically with regard to MTZB one, which is the letter of May eighth, two thousand twenty-five, with his review, in certain conditions that he would, if the board would approve it, would require, suggested the applicant conform as part of his plan. The second consideration was for MTZB two, that's the February seventh, twenty twenty-five letter with respect to the traffic study that was submitted on behalf of the applicant, and also marked as part of the applicant's presentation was A one, and it's a use variance plan which is dated... Can't read the date on that show, my age. No, anyway, it's A one, okay, everybody knows what the plan is.
You know what it is.
I know. The board has to consider the testimony that's presented, you have to undertake the legal criteria with respect to whether or not to grant the variances that are sought, the applicant must demonstrate the special reasons why the proposed use carries out a purpose of zoning for how the refusal to allow the project would impose on the applicant undue hardship, and secondly, in addition, the applicant must demonstrate that the requested use variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The planner went through his analysis and suggested to the board that the positive criteria outweighs the negative criteria, and therefore, this is what the board needs to consider, you would need a motion to approve and vote accordingly. Again, the presentation of the resolution must be in the, in the affirmative.
Affirmative.
Okay, not to suggest to the public you're going to approve it, but it must be in the affirmative and you vote accordingly.
Okay. Members, your pleasure in regards to application twenty-four dash fifty-four.
Motion to approve, Cozak.
Second. Rice. Roll call.
Ms. Fazano?
No.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cozak?
I personally did not take the applicant's financial position into account, it's irrelevant to, to me as a board member, but I did take the township planners professional to this variance, because it does not show any detriment to the area and, and is still subject to site plan approval, so yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, as stated by Mr. Cozak.
Okay, Ms. Fazano?
Yes.
Mr. Heffner?
I got to agree with Dan, to me personally, it's nothing to do about the finances, we're actually going to be allowing to put less homes in an area that can, they can have more in there. A lot of the residents that have issues with traffic, all that can be addressed at the planning board meeting once that site comes up, we really can't, it's not an issue for us to vote on, so I'm going to yes.
Mr. Colavita?
While I agree with the residents regarding the traffic and the concerns there, I think they're all pre-existing conditions causing the traffic, and according to our planner, the impact, the positive criteria outweigh the negative, so yes.
Mr. McGeehan?
Yes.
Mr. Kamisky?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Colavita.
Use variance is approved.
That's both free ranges, the lot area and...
The traffic.
You have the, the, uh, non-conforming tract size and the use variance. Right. Thank you.
I usually do, spread the love, you know? Do you, do you guys want to take a five-minute break, or no?
All right.
Are you okay? Okay. You okay?
You're taking a five-minute break?
No, we're not taking a five-minute break.
We're not.
Oh, if it's the plan you submitted, I don't need that, thank you.
Yeah, because we have it, we have the A, A one. Have a good night.
How do you say his name, Beeler? Beeler? Beeler?
You want to take a break? Len, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Five minutes, no more.
Five dash zero seven.
We did.
Alan Beeler, use variance. Can this application be deemed complete?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Adam?
Adam, do you want to confirm?
Sorry, just as long as everybody, does everybody have the signed exhibits in their packages? They have the size and what they, or the cause of look like.
Yes.
I think that was your house, Chuck. We're here.
I don't find that one.
Everybody got them?
Oh, okay, here it is.
Yeah.
I found it.
Okay.
Very good. If everybody has them.
As long as our members have those pictures.
We can deem it complete.
Okay.
As submitted with the application.
Is there a motion?
How am I smart, boys?
Is there a motion to deem the application complete?
No moves.
Second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. Leonard Schwartz, Law Office, Lightning Schwartz, representing the applicant. This is a property that is, you know where Williams Town Farmer's Market is. Across the street on the Black Horse Pike is the dry cleaners. Behind the dry cleaners is a large tract of land that has been vacant for many, many, many years, which my client has purchased and has started to, and we were in for site plan a while ago and got all those approvals. And as, if you've been out there, you can see that he's already started to build some of the sheds that he's, that he does sell. He still ha- has the sheds that are on the Farmer's Market site. So we have that site and this site. This site, Mr. Beeler feels that he needs to have it totally fenced in and he, and so he would indicate to you why he feels that he needs a six-foot fence all the way around. The fencing is allowed to be six-foot everywhere except in the front. He's asking for a variance for the six-foot fence to also be in the front of the property. The second app, part of the application is the sign, as is indicated, we're indicating, going along with what the township sign ordinance requires. The EMC, electronic sign, is not allowed off the Black Horse Pike except in certain other areas, I think on three twenty-two. So in and of itself, the electronic sign being put on Marshall Avenue is not in and of itself allowed. The proposal, as the client will confirm, is going to be put in the middle of the property on Marshall Avenue, directly across the street from the parking lot for Farmer's Market, instructed in front of the various sheds that he's temporarily being put on that site. The sign that he has submitted and proposed, the ordinance in and of itself require, allows for an EMC sign of twenty-five square feet with a total of fifty square feet, so that the static sign on top or bottom would be fif- would be twenty-five and the bottom would be twenty-five. His proposal that he submitted, and that's why we're just discussing, is that what is proposed at the present time is that the EMC, the lower, the lower half of the sign is basically proposed to be fifty square feet, so that basically totally exceeds what is allowed for an EMC sign. It doubles it, and then the, and then the top sign then becomes another forty square feet, so you have a total of ninety square feet as opposed to fifty square feet. That's one, and that of course adds on each side, and that's what he is proposing. So we have both my client sworn in and his sign person, we can have some testimony.
Can I just clarify one thing, just so the board knows? The fence was already approved as part of the site plan. The only thing they're here for tonight is to have six-foot in the front of the property.
Was the type of fence approved as well?
I, I think so. I think that, I don't have the details in front of me.
The type of fence, was the type of fence?
Because they already came for the whole site plan.
Okay.
I don't think there was a condition of, of type of fence, was there?
Well, I think the red level was post.
Split rail.
Split rail.
It was split rail.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if it has to be a site plan amendment or a use because of the site plan already at construction.
You can make it a condition of use if it's something that.
Only in the front.
In the front, only in the front.
The sides, you're going to have chain link.
In the front, just chain link.
And you want chain link in the front, so that's what we're here for.
They already have it.
Six-foot high chain link. For the, do you have approval for fencing in the front?
Yeah.
Why don't we swear a man, sir? If you could just, just come forward and just state your name for the record and your address, please.
Alan Beeler, owner of seven, seven hundred Marshall Avenue.
Okay, and do you swear affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Sure.
Okay. The gentleman behind him, someone's going to testify as well? Just your name, sir, and address for the record.
Randy Bergy. I'm at four fifty West Lincoln Avenue, Myers Town, Pennsylvania.
Okay, just swear affirm to tell the truth. Thank you.
Now, with regard to, with regard to, do you recall, was that the original school that, uh, the specifics type of chains?
Okay.
Yeah, from what I remember, on the original site plan, we had a post-rail fence with wire on the back, and then we revised the site plan to show the chain link.
So you're just going from the four foot to the six foot? Same type of fence? It's going, no?
No.
Split rail.
Split rail, but I'm saying height though.
Now he's going for chain link.
Yes.
Okay.
He's giving, where did it split rail?
I thought he said at first it was split rail, then he amended it to go to chain link, and now he's going to six-foot high chain link.
That's what he said.
After it was submitted, like I got my engineer to draw, to draw this up for this meeting.
Uh-oh.
So you're changing the, around the entire parcel?
Yeah.
You're changing the type of fence?
No, just on the front.
All we were going to do originally was, there's a section right behind the minimum cleaners that there's no fence.
Okay.
It's time to figure it out.
There's this existing fence all the way around the front.
And that, leaving the existing fence as is, and that's, and that's all confirmed. So the only thing you're asking for at this point is to allow you to have, linking up with the.
Six foot.
Rest of the fencing, but having a six-foot high fence in the front.
Yes.
Is that what they're, that's putting permanently there?
Yes.
And what type of fence are you proposing?
Six-foot high black one could be a chain link. Six-foot high black one could be a chain link.
And the reason why you want it to be six-foot high as opposed to the four foot?
Because we have a temporary fence there and we've seen the kids from the township or from the apartment complex just jump over there. Just trying to keep people out.
So you want to make sure for security reasons that, that hopefully an option now be over six-foot fence opposed to four foot?
Correct.
Do you have any other testimony you want to give the board with regard to the fence? There's a, two sides?
On one end of the property, yeah, on the site plan there. The other thing that we changed was with the change of the fence was the location of the sign. The prior site plan had it up closer toward the market, more toward the middle of the lot currently.
Originally, we had it closer to the cleaners?
Yes.
So now you're, you're proposing that the sign.
Sign on the middle of the lot.
More in the middle of the lot?
Yes.
Okay. Why do you feel that you're asking now for the sign to be ninety square feet as opposed to the maximum for static and electronic fifty square feet?
Visibility, I was worried, but I think bigger would be better because people driving down, driving down Marshall Avenue doesn't see them. And the reason for the digital sign is to hopefully direct people more towards our office across the street.
Okay. Other than that, you would be complying, the, the, the plan that you've, the sign that you showed, shows the EMC, electronic part of the sign at the bottom is ten foot wide and five by nine.
Correct.
And then the static sign for springville above that is supposed to be in like four.
Correct.
Could you, to try to come closer to compliance with the county ordinance, would you be able to reduce the size of the static sign that says your company name is what?
Springville Woodworks.
Okay. Is it possible to reduce the static sign, part of the sign, a little bit closer to the fifty?
Yeah, we could do that.
Any other, any, any testimony to add? Anything else you want to add?
I think so.
Okay. If you can give us your name again.
He already did this for me. Okay, you can give us your name again now.
My name's Randy Bergy. I'm with Forest Signs.
So Randy, you've submitted some plans, pictures of the signs, not, not this specific, but I mean, yeah.
Yes, I have, yes.
Okay. Now, explain to the board what we're proposing.
So as you heard before, we're proposing a static sign, latest sign on the top with a electronic message center on the bottom, forty square feet for the top one and fifty square feet for the bottom on two steel, steel posts, eight inch steel poles. And the graphics are not determined, he's renovating his logo at this time, so that's why there's no graphics on the top portion. But they will be digitally printed in a full color vinyl, but the actual graphics are to be determined.
Can you explain to the board why you feel that a sign that's that large would work growing on this property?
Yeah, so as he mentioned, Alan mentioned before, his office is very far away from where this, this lot is actually placed, so, and he was saying today that there's a lot of traffic that comes in Marshall Avenue from both sides, and that parking lot actually fills up Friday and Saturday. And so you have a greater viewing distance, really good viewing distance both ways, so a larger sign would allow customers to come in, they see the sign from further distance, making it safer, as obviously if they're putting a fence around, you're going to have people, children, walking, you're going to have people coming in from the parking lot over to that display area, so better direct, direction for customers, knowing where the office is, also understanding that this is where they need to go, is always better for safety and for better visibility. Larger is better for visibility.
Len, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Len, you already asked your applicant that, could you reduce one sign, right? And he said yes. What do you want to reduce it to? The, the, the top sign you're going to reduce? I'm, I'm just saying, you, you already opened that door.
Is it possible to reduce the top, the static sign and still be able to?
Achieve.
Present, achieve what, what you're looking for?
I feel like the four by ten proportions is the be- is a better proportion to being able to, you know, create your logo or your branding in a way that's more legible and readable. I mean, we can narrow it down, but then, you know, the, the less height you have, then you start narrowing down the height of the letter. So I think it would be possible if, but I, I feel like the four by ten is definitely the best size for legibility and for being able to be viewed from far away, because with all the traffic right there, you want people to be viewed, as they come into Marshall Avenue, you want them to be able to see the sign and make a decision before they get there. That way they're not looking around and distracted by the where to go, and then you have all the people walking. So I, while I, you know, obviously we can do anything, but I still feel like the four by ten proportions are much better for more legibility and clearer, clearer reading from further away.
If we were reducing the sign at all, would it have to be the front portion?
I would see, I mean, if you want to reduce the electronic portion, I would not go smaller than a four by eight, which, which is thirty-two square feet, but that's still, my understanding is that still exceeds your ordinance of twenty-five square feet. So, I mean, we could reduce that portion of it some if we need to, but again, the main reason for this size is to make sure that as people come into Marshall Avenue, they can read the sign and make a decision before they get to the parking lot, so that you don't have a lot of distractions of where to go when people are walking to and from the parking lot and, you know, across the road to the sales lot. So I, yeah, I would highly recommend to keep it this size for that reason, but obviously we can do anything that you feel is necessary.
I just have, just a question. You, you're in the business of signage like this, for instance, how effective is a larger sign? Wouldn't that be more effective on an off-site type advertisement like a, a billboard? This is not, the products being sold is not like a product like, okay, oh, there's a shed, let me stop and buy a shed, I'm going to buy a gallon of milk on the way home. And I'm trying to, not trying to be facetious, but.
Sure.
Trying to generate people to come there and know that they're, notice they're there. You have two signs on here, okay, one is, if given the measurements, it's ninety square feet, so you're suggesting that what, be reduced to seventy square feet? Is that the, the number that you're?
Yeah, so a four by eight would be thirty-two square feet, and then we would have the four by, in that case, just for better visibility, I would probably reduce the top sign to four by eight as well.
You're saying for visibility, visibility for the people driving down the street?
Yes, driving in Marshall.
Okay, because my point is that generally people aren't driving around and all of a sudden they see a, they see a shed place and I'm going to decide to stop and buy a shed. Is that, you know, again, I'm just trying to reconcile a lot of things, because it has two signs on here. Is one going to be for other type of advertising or it's all for the same business?
No, I think everything is proposed to be for the sheds, for the, for his business advertising, and the other factor is that his office is farther away, and so to direct traffic from this point over to his office.
That leads me to the final question or point I want to make.
Sure.
Can't the digital sign have an arrow pointing office?
Yeah, it can.
Rather than having this whole separate sign and, and I'm just kind of throwing these suggestions out.
I was going to give some reports.
Okay, all right, I'm just, just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, no, it's a good, good observation, but.
I think there's a, now, is there a sign of where your office?
Currently, there's a small sign. Yes, currently we have a sign on our office now, we've not actually moved into it yet, but we do have a sales office with an arrow. Correct.
This sign would be more directional to where your new display is.
So yeah, we're trying to get the people to know where our office is, from Marshall Avenue to our office on, on the Farmer's Market side.
Right. But the, is there a, would be an office over on this, on this side?
No.
So you're going to have the display over here, you have the display on the Farmer's Market, parking lot itself, and you have the other dis- display on the other side or on, what's that street?
On this side.
Maxine.
So it's on, it's on.
It's on the parking lot, but your other, your office is over at the Maxine side.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, no.
Do you have any problem as you propose?
Friend to be done.
Is there a possibility of reducing it down to either four by eight?
Yeah, I, I put, we put the size on there, what we'd like to really have, because I think it's, it's better.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. Len, why don't we listen to our Adam first? Let's see what he has to say before we make any decisions here. That's my opinion, but.
I'll, I'll go with it.
Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will back up and just, you know, cover what we're, what we're here for and what we're hearing. The six-foot high chain link fence in the, along the front edge of the property is a variance condition as four feet is only permitted in the front yard. That's number one. Second is the electronic messaging sign along Marshall Avenue where they are only permitted along the Black Horse Pike in our code. Now, going into a little bit about the use, I just want to touch on, first, let me just handle the fence first. So the fence in the front yard, you, you're proposing a six-foot high chain link vinyl fence along the front edge of the property. The first thing I'll say is the fence is, at least on this plan that was submitted, not tie in to the surrounding fencing. On top of that, the only proposed fence that I see shown on this plan is on your property along the front edge. There's, the other three sides of the property don't show any proposed fence. I don't know if that was omitted from the first site plan or, you know, if something got lost there, but it looks like you're proposing to tie in to the existing fence on adjacent properties, which obviously can't cross the property line with your fence to tie in. On two sides of the property, there's six-foot high, this says board-on-board fence along where the apartments are, and then there's six-foot high fence against to the south of your property, but then there's only a four-foot high fence along, I guess it's the cleaners property up front here, the minimum cleaner's property. So again, you're using the testimony that you're trying to prevent people from trespassing into the site. There's already an existing six-foot fence that doesn't seem to be stopping anybody from getting into the site, and that's your testimony. So to deviate and to grant a variance for a six-foot high fence in the front yard where you're having issues in the backyard, as you're saying, and people are already jumping over that fence, I, I don't think there's been enough of a positive versus negative criteria, which is your burden to prove, to say that we should grant a variance for the six-foot high fence. Now, the board has their decision to make, I'm only presenting my opinions on this. One other thing that I would like to bring up, is there any fencing, you, you, your sheds are across the street as well, right, at the Farmer's Market? Is there any fencing around any of those sheds to keep people out of there? There's nothing over there as well? And you're doing the same thing on this side? As, you're doing sheds on this side as well, right?
Correct.
It's just continuation of the business across the street?
Yes.
Okay. That's also, you know, without stating the obvious, why aren't you protecting or trying to protect the sheds on the other property with fencing?
I probably would, but we were running there and the area was now letting me put up a fence, and I don't know if anybody here is involved with the police department, but we've had kicks out there multiple times over the years.
Okay. I, I under, I can understand that, and you had issues, but, you know, I mean, again, you're, you're running the same business on both sites and you're proposing to do one thing on one site and not something on the other side, you're asking for a variance from the board, which requires a burden to prove. The other thing that I'll mention with this, the, going to the electronic sign, which is the other variance that we're here tonight for. Why an electronic messaging sign? Why do you feel that you need one versus what was approved? I believe there were static signs before, I'm not a hundred percent on that, but there's a static sign closer to the Black Horse Pike, why now are you changing? What's, what's the need, what's the actual need? Again, this is your burden to prove. You are requesting a variance, you have to provide testimony as to why you need that sign and to why the positive outweighs the negative as far as deviating from the, from the ordinance. So why do you need that electronic messaging sign?
So I just think that we could possibly put like a picture of the office up there and direct traffic, and I just think digital would be more meaningful to customers.
Okay. My other question is, why the need for two signs? Can't the electronic messaging sign say Springville Woodworks as well as pictures of, you know, sheds and things like that? It's electronic, so we can cycle through, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because you're asking for a deviation where twenty-five square feet is permitted per sign, and I mean, you're, you're substantially exceeding that requirement. So I'm just trying to kind of get to the nuts and bolts about why you need everything. Going back to that, the electronic messaging sign is proposed along Marshall, before the sign was proposed closer to the Black Horse Pike, which would, you know, be a little bit more in conformance with our ordinance if you're proposing electronic up front. Now you're proposing it off-site. To, I think, Mr. Fiori's point, if somebody's shopping for a shed, right, they're probably looking you up online, that's probably where most of your business comes from, or they're driving down the Pike and they see Springville Woodworks, I'm pretty sure you guys have a pretty large sign out on the Pike, correct, right?
No.
What is it, a small sign?
We don't have any sign out there.
You don't have any sign on the other side?
There's a little telephone on the side, I put a few, well, one put the handle down on the one side, and the other one, on the other side, yeah, it's basically faded from all the way.
Okay, all right. But you're not proposing, so did you ever pursue maybe an easement from anybody to actually put the sign along Black Horse Pike, so if people are driving down the Pike, they know, hey, there's sheds down Marshall?
No, they don't.
You never tried to pursue that or anything? Okay. All right.
Is it possible that you could move that sign instead of it being centered to this, to the site, bringing it up closer to the Black Horse Pike? So it's in the initial, what is it, fifty, two-hundred foot area?
You probably could put it up there, I think it's really useful for the total property to the Black Horse Pike, where you want to go with, want them to direct, to direct the people to our office. Like, from up, up towards the Pike, we can't even see our office from there, so.
And the, if we, if we moved it closer to the Pike, across the street is actually a building for the parking lot.
That's right.
Where you're proposing to put it is actually across the street and then drop the parking lot.
Yeah.
If you feel they, they can see it better, it needs to.
Okay. The last thing that I'll point out, again, I can go through the rest of this letter, there's, uh, conditions that are on here. There's a lot of conditions for the EMC signs that we can go through. This is a residential neighborhood, it's a, it's the, uh, R-one zoning district, which does not obviously permit any kind of non-residential sign or an electronic messaging sign. I personally don't believe that, you know, enough has been given to show the burden of proof, positive over the negative criteria for, for granting that. That's my opinion on this. And the other piece with the fence, again, we've heard testimony that people are still jumping fence and getting in and there's been no provision to actually take steps to protect the sheds on the other property. So again, going back to that burden of proof that the applicant's supposed to provide, I don't feel has been met. But if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Okay. Members of the board have any questions for Adam?
Can we just mark that as NTZB one for this application? That would be the letter dated May eighth, twenty-twenty-five from Colliers.
Okay. Seeing none. You have anything else, Len, before I open the public?
I was just discussing the, some of the points that were just brought off. The applicant has no problem with, uh, putting up a six-foot fence around the entire property. It would match the six-foot-high chain-linked vinyl fence. So, so that, uh, even though there's fence there, uh, any of, any fence that certainly is his fence will be replaced, but some of the fencing, which is probably in the back and maybe on the sides, uh, that would be, that, if that belongs to somebody else, it's just going to be next to, uh, the existing fence itself. But he would put a, a six-foot fence around the entire property?
I would, if that would make different choice.
Does that make?
Well, we're here for the front part.
Well, we're here for the front part, but, but not the back.
You can make it as a condition of the granting the variance for the front part, that he fenced in the entire property.
Are we now getting into site plan amendment?
No, not because it's before the board now, so you can put a condi, you can put a condition of, because it really, the site plan didn't deal with that fence. From what it sounds like, it's kind of a hodgepodge of fences all around there, correct?
That's, and their own adjacent properties. At least from this plan, that was submitted with this application.
And again, just a little clar, I think you're proposing, Mr. Schwartz, that there's going to be a uniformity. So not only is it not going to fill in the gaps where there aren't fences, you're going to put up an entire fence.
The only thing is we would, we're not going to take down fences that don't belong to us, the, the new fence would be next to what on, on Mr. Beeler's property.
On Mr. Beeler's property, okay.
Right. And that would be a condition of the approval for that, for that six-foot fence. With regard to the sign itself, uh, going along with what this, our, uh, sign expert indicated, uh, I think probably if the board would go along with it, that we would be, uh, better off dealing with, uh, you said four by eight? A four by eight for the, for static and four by eight for the, for the digital. On top of which was not testified to, and of course, uh, which, uh, would be complying with, is everything under the ordinance, uh, in terms of the, uh, the eight seconds and, and, uh, the lighting and all the criteria that, uh, all electric equipment on newly constructed EMC signs should be UL listed and labeled, et cetera, et cetera. All the, all the sections of the ordinance on that we have to comply with, uh, those signs will comply with, with the ordinance, correct? So, uh, certainly as a, there is, there is no variance requested with regard to any of that criteria. That criteria has to be complied with and would be complied with. We're just asking that, uh, you basically have a four by eight and a four by eight sign.
So not to exceed sixty-four square feet?
Sorry.
Sixty-four square feet would not exceed?
That would be sixty-four, correct.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, electronic messaging signs have a requirement of twenty-five square feet per side if they're on the Black Horse Pike.
Correct.
So we'd be giving them, through the chair, we'd be giving seven-foot variance on the electronic?
You, well, twenty-five's, whatever way that twenty-five is made up, but you're going to sixty-four square feet?
No.
Sixty-four total.
Total. It's going to be thirty-two.
Thirty-two and thirty-two, right, per side.
We're allowed twenty-five, so we're giving them seven foot.
Oh, per side.
Correct. Twenty-five per side, correct.
That's on a Black Horse Pike.
On the Black Horse Pike.
This is not the Black Horse Pike.
No, I understand. No, I'm just clarifying what, what we're, so we're.
Right. The standard, the twenty-five foot on the Black Horse Pike, is that, I know it's the township ordinance, does that mimic some sort of state standard on the state highway, though? It probably does, I'm assuming it does.
I'm, I'm assuming it does because most of the regulations are within that DOT guidance.
And we don't have any particular, well, we do have a size on resident, in residential areas. And just so we're clear, we're, we're going to give a larger sign than that which we, we've rented on the Black Horse Pike when somebody can do fifty-five miles per hour?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just kind of throwing these questions out here, these, these issues out here, so.
Right, that's exactly right. I mean, that's where, again, they're meant to be placed on the Black Horse Pike and they're meant to be, if you're going a little bit bigger, you would want it to be on the Black Horse Pike where somebody's going to be driving fifty-five miles an hour and they can see that. And that's why you would go up in size, but I, I just, again, I don't see a compelling need for a sign that date along Marshawn.
So, if, if we even go to grant a sign, electronic, where it's not supposed to be, we should stay within the twenty-five, we shouldn't be square feet, right?
That would be my opinion, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that we should go over to twenty-five.
And again, you're asking for, the applicant is asking for two signs as well. They're asking for a static sign and the electronic sign. So, you know, both can be accomplished in one sign, electronic messaging.
Right, that's what you were trying to say, why would, why would they need two?
Right.
And they double-sided their sign, or is the electronic double-sided?
Yeah.
And the static?
Static is also double-sided.
So you're sixty-four and sixty-four.
Especially for a side street, like you're saying, signing in the Pike.
Right.
The speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour, so they're not zooming by.
Right, and Mr. Colley is right, sixty-four and sixty-four total.
Right.
For the sign area.
Right.
Both sides.
Okay.
So. Do you, uh, what I?
To continue, do you have anything else you want to say or do you want me to open to the public?
Um, yeah, the conversation I was just, just having was that, um, we go back to what, uh, Adam is talking about and having twenty-five and twenty-five on each side. So that's, the size, size requirements are met, uh, we still need to use variance because it's digital. Uh, but, uh, reducing it down, so now we're, now we're down to what the, what the Black Horse Pike requirement is of the, of the fifty total, twenty-five and twenty-five.
So Adam's, through the chair, Adam's also saying he doesn't think you're, you have a need for two signs. I'm not talking one side, that, he's saying either the electronic or, and do away with the other. Am I correct, Adam?
That's correct, absolutely, I.
That he don't feel you need two, two signs that were granted, granting you the electronic one where you can change things, if we grant it, is enough for.
So if we, if we did it that way?
You're getting electronic sign where it shouldn't be.
Understand.
Because you're, because of the distance you are to the Pike.
I think the, the, this, the fifty, the, the library has it, the both ways, the twenty-five and twenty-five, down the street.
Yeah, we're giving you that. That's what we, that's what he's proposing. Adam suggesting, one electronic sign.
Right.
Twenty-fives to, on each side.
Right.
And that's it.
That's it.
No, I'm, I'm saying that the library has that and then it has the static sign above it, which is another twenty-five.
That's on the Black Horse Pike?
No.
No. No, that's the one on, on Marshawn.
We're talking about the book library. Every application stands on its own, right?
Sorry, not, not the library restaurant.
Right? Oh, you're talking, you're not talking about the library restaurant?
No, I'm talking to the monitor.
You're talking to the library, but every application stands on its own, right?
Understand. It's on, just saying it's the same, same street.
Yeah.
If we did that, would you propose a, making the just electronic, uh, larger than the twenty-five? If the board were to, were to grant it?
Uh, I would, I think I would recommend staying with the ordinance of twenty-five and twenty-five. And the only thing we need is a, is a granted variance to have an electronic sign on Marshawn.
Correct. Correct.
That's what I would, my recommendation.
The twenty-five and static and twenty-five on the bottom.
Yeah. That would eliminate. Asking for something other than the ordinance.
Okay. All right, so, so there's a little confusion up here because.
I'm not confused.
Me. I'm talking about me. You're still talking about two separate signs or ba, or two, uh, one sign that's double-faced on both sides?
What is the ordinance? My understanding was it's twenty-five on top and twenty-five on the bottom.
Are they two separate signs or are they, or is it?
It's one double-sided sign.
So one double-sided sign, which is fifty total, the top portion of it is static at the twenty-five and the bottom is twenty-five.
Yes.
So it's one.
No, right?
No.
Twenty-five on one side.
One, one sign.
Twenty-five on the, total of fifty, twenty-five and twenty-five.
Sign, sign.
No.
One sign.
That's what they're saying, that's what the board is saying.
That's what we're saying.
That's what I'm sitting up here and being quiet.
Can our, can our planner?
The ordinance is.
Let our, let our professional clarify.
Chuck's right, it's one sign, twenty-five per side. Twenty-five per side.
That's for the electronic portion.
There's one, you're in a residential zone, they don't really make provisions for non-residential signs in residential zones, we don't, we don't have that provision for the electronic sign. What I'm telling you is that you're allowed twenty-five feet per side.
Correct.
If, I don't see a need, and again, we're going back to the need for a variance here, there's no, there's no burden of proof being provided for even needing the two signs for the same business. Usually, one sign for a business, you're advertising a shed business. You don't see the need for the two signs when an electronic sign can display Springville Woodworks and then flip and display sheds. You're, you're increasing the, the ordinance specific in the twenty-five square feet and when you do two signs, you're increasing that square footage. You're asking again for a larger variance, a larger deviation.
I don't recall in the, and I don't, I don't have that portion of the ordinance, but I don't recall that the residential section of the township ordinance limits the sign to twenty-five feet.
One sign.
I know in the non-residential district, there are one, three standing in sign for a street front and permitted, provided, said sign is not a secret area of fifty square feet on each side, and then of course, when you get down to the electronic, it's twenty-five feet for the electronic portion of it. But I don't recall, and I could be wrong.
It's because they're not allowed in residential area, that's why it's not in there.
Is it because they're not allowed in the residential area, that's why there are no?
I even wanted to check, just to make sure, the residential area, you're right.
So there wouldn't be any specifications in the code because they're not allowed.
Correct.
Not permitted, that's the answer.
But there's no, what the, but in, in a residential district, there is nothing in the ordinance that says, here's what the size of the sign can be. You can have a sign in a residential district, you can't have electronic sign in a residential district.
But, uh, Mr. Chair, if you, if I may, you, you're still, you're asking for a variance condition for the placement of the sign, number one, electronic messaging sign, you, in my opinion, haven't given good proof as to why you need a static sign with an electronic messaging sign in a residential district. And the size requirements, there, there's no, there hasn't been any testimony presented that says, I understand bigger is better, but substantiates why it's going to drive more traffic to the business or why it's needed. Again, going back to that burden of proof that you have to prove, which is that the positive outweigh the negative.
Right.
You're asking us to deviate directly from the ordinance for variance, and you haven't given any positive criteria to outweigh the negative criteria that needs to be, that you need to balance and test.
Okay, just give me one second.
I'm not confused, I didn't get confused, Dan. Confused, I don't know what the hell is going on.
It's one feet, seven, four by ten.
Where do the fence start?
Five by ten, it's five by ten.
It's five, it's twelve feet. We just did it for the, we did it for the safety. A lot of six-foot fence.
Yes, and it's nine plus five.
It's non-residential.
Four and a half, six foot.
No.
I did that one as well. I don't know. Yes, it's, it's big.
When do we get into the part of the, the net, so I'm waiting to follow up with the signal.
I don't know.
Oh, give me fuck, I'll quit now, I'm going to shit, I'll walk out of here. All right, Len, can we, can we open to the public and, and you can?
Sure.
All right, is there motion open or public?
So moved.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Is there open to public who should speak on behalf of application twenty-five dash zero-seven? Seeing none, is motion to close the public portion.
So moved. Second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Mr. Schwartz? Is there anything you?
The, uh, only question that, that was being raised is if there is no digital, what does, in the residential zone, what, what size sign is allowed?
I, I'm not going back on the previous approval. So, whatever that previous approval was written for is what you're permitted for.
I don't think there was ever a approval for a sign, it was just to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Usually when we come in for a site plan, unless we're coming in with something to be deviated, oh, we'll, we'll come in and we'll, and we will deviate. But, uh, usually the, the approvals are subject to whatever the zoning ordinance requires.
Correct, but you proposed a sign, you said, correct?
We did propose a specific sign, just in general, that a sign would be going up and that we would be meeting, at that time, we would be meeting the criteria of the zoning ordinance. Now we're coming in and changing what the zoning ordinance requires.
Okay, well, I don't, again, whatever that approval had said and everything, I don't have that in front of me and, you know, that, the fact that you said you were going to comply with it, I don't know what was discussed, I don't know what was proposed, so I'm going to let that be and just consider what we have in front of us. Unless, Mr. Chair has any other questions.
Believe in the original work, in the original approval. So my, my only question is if he does not do a digital sign, is there anything in the, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my ordinance book. Uh, the criteria for a.
Static sign.
Static sign. I don't think there was any, any technical limits on it. And Alan, you're talking about putting a, what size sign, static sign?
So, if I recall, on the original site plan, it says proposed sign. And when I came back in to talk to, was it Tara in zoning board?
Zoning.
Zoning officer. Yeah, she, what she gave me was this piece of paper, actually, up to fifty square feet. And there was never anything hidden in on the sign, actual sign. It just said proposed sign, no saying anything. So I, I guess my question, I thought I was allowed to go up to fifty square feet per side, but I'm not sure.
Again, I would have to check the code or defer to what Tara provided on that one. Stop this and come back with a different ramp, Lee.
Any suggestions?
Me?
Well, do you want, the suggestion would be if you want to table it, find out what the issue is, voting on it?
We could vote on the fence now and then table.
I would table, I would table, just tabling both of them and just coming back on the issue. So there'd be some clarity to it.
Okay.
Rather than your client being prejudiced by some action that's being taken tonight, so.
Alright.
Okay. So that way we'll get some clarification.
Okay, so you would agree to table it and waive any time requirements for us to take final action?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the, the table of this application?
So moved.
Second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
We can put him on the G meeting.
Okay, yeah, it's okay.
Pretty quick, sir. I, I won't be there.
Speak to the zoning officer, try to get a better clarification.
Thank you, Len. Excellent agenda, application twenty-five dash zero four, Eugene Wine, use variance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name's Richard Roy, I am here on behalf of the applicant. I have written Gene Weed, I would say the owner of Technicetec LLC, but he's the, not the LLC, as well as Joe Mancini, our site engineer and professional planner. So it makes sense, why don't swear them in just to get it out of the way?
Just, sir, just state your name for the record?
Eugene J. Weed.
And your address?
Thirty-three, two to quarter, Walton, Jersey.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, and also your engineer and planner, sir, just your name for the record?
Joseph Mancini, I try to say engineer.
Okay, raise your right hand. Okay, you swear affirm to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? I think you've testified before this board previously, have you?
I have.
Okay, very good, so you can, if you'd like, you can accept him as an expert.
Okay.
To Chairman.
In the interest of time and the Philly's winning streak, I'll try to be short. I won't mention that for Massachusetts and South Beach Point also. This is our application in connection with fifteen oh one to fifteen oh three, South Black Horse Pike. It's a property, we're not proposing any changes to the property. It's a property on which is located a residential dwelling and a commercial building to the rear. Gene will be confirming all of this, but Gene acquired the property in a foreclosure in two thousand seventeen. At the time he acquired the property, the commercial use was some type of printing operation, which you'll hear him tell you, had some fairly heavy equipment, and the residential use was as a duplex, a one-bedroom on the first floor, two-bedroom on the second floor. The residence was set up with separate utility meters, separate electric meters, and each year since he has owned it, he has come and registered and obtained basically a CO for each of the units from the township. At one point in the last year or so, the tenant of the commercial part of the property, which is basically a one-man shop that does custom motorcycles, asked if Gene could pave what was a gravel driveway because the gravel was a problem with the motorcycles. Gene did that and somehow that ended up on the Pine Lands radar. And he received a letter saying, hey, you need to make this right. You need to make it right with us and you need to make it right with the township. So that's why we're here tonight. I just want you to understand, it's not go ahead and do something and seek forgiveness later. He thought it was a duplex use, thought it was allowed as a duplex use. We have evidence, or at least we've seen in Pine Lands letters going back as far as nineteen ninety-eight, references to it being used as a duplex. So we're asking for basically two variances tonight, to be allowed to use the residential structure as a duplex and there are two uses on that lot. Gene, with that background, let me just ask you a few questions and make it official. You heard me say you obtained this property in a foreclosure in two thousand seventeen?
That's correct.
And you've seen correspondence from the Pine Lands going back to ninety-eight where this was referred to as duplex?
That's true.
And when you acquired this, you had no idea that there had been any prior issue about it being used as duplex?
No.
And you've indicated to me and you heard me represent, how was the residential structure set up? Separate water meters?
Separate water meters, separate utility meters for electric and gas and.
So you didn't install any, that was all there?
No, that was, that was there, in fact, the township just changed the two water meters in the property, because they upgraded the meters.
And you heard me represent that each year you would register this property as a duplex with the township?
Yes.
And, and no issues ever came up with?
No, I didn't, I, I'd get COs, they came in, they found some file, you know, something that needed correcting, I corrected it, and I'd ultimately get a CO.
And this all came up as a result of the paving of the driveway?
That's correct.
And, and the paving of the driveway was where the prior gravel driveway had been located?
That's correct.
So there's no other disturbance to the site other than that?
No.
Have you ever had any complaints from any neighbors about either the use of duplex or what the motorcycle customizer is doing?
No.
Does all of his work take place inside the building?
That, that's where he does it for.
And are any of the motorcycles, anything else stored outside or is it all inside the building?
They're, they're stored inside, they're too expensive because he's customizing them.
And you heard me describe it for residents, it's a one-bedroom downstairs and a two-bedroom upstairs. And if you're allowed to continue, that's how you're going to, you're supposed to continue using it?
Yes.
And when this came up, the township said, hey, unless you have our approval, you can't use this as a duplex, you actually stop using upstairs.
Correct, that's correct.
And the motorcycle person, he's been there approximately three and a half, four years?
He's since, he's since his fourth year, December would be the end of the fourth year at least.
Alright, and before that, what was there?
When I acquired the property, there was a printing shop there, and he had been there for quite some time. He had, in the back, he had all this big printing equipment, which he was no longer using because he couldn't make a living off of it and he was doing computer printing.
The current user, he's basically a one-man shop?
Pretty much, yes.
So you, they're on employees' bargaining, I mean, if he needs something specialized, somebody might come in, but for the most part, it's just him?
It's him and he gets some people to come in sometimes to do piecework for him.
Okay, just generally his hours, is it nine to five, is what it feels like working?
It's, it's pretty much what he feels like working, I mean, he just technically, you know, a few minutes ago, he's still at the shop, but he probably came in at ten or eleven o'clock, you know, in the morning.
Does he receive any deliveries or does he just go out and get what he needs?
He does both, he gets deliveries and he, he picks up stuff.
If he gets a delivery, is it like a FedEx truck or UPS truck or?
I don't, I, I've never been there for it, I, I assume so, I mean, if he gets a little gas night for motorcycle, I mean, it doesn't come through Amazon, I don't think.
But there were no tractor trail, there's nothing large at all?
No, that's all.
Okay. And Gene, if the board were to impose a condition, we're, we're asking for approval for the two uses, the duplex and the motorcycle person, if that commercial use were to change, somebody else came in and we're also asking the board to waive site plan approval. Would you accept the condition that said if the commercial use changes, the new tenant would have to come in and either ask for a waiver of site plan approval or a site plan so that the board would know what was going on there?
I have a problem with that.
Alright. Again, it's getting later, you're on your third use variance, so I don't want to beat it to death. If the board has questions, I'm happy to have Gene answer them, if not, I will call Joe.
Adam, do you want to go now or are you going to wait?
Yeah, we can continue.
Oh, you guys can continue.
Joe, so you've been qualified, Gene. You've been qualified before this board, correct?
I have.
Alright, can you just briefly walk the board through the site and how it functions?
Sure, absolutely, so I'm just going to reference the site plan that was submitted. Black Horse Pike is on the right side of the plan, ordinance is up. This is near the south-west intersection of Port Royal and East Black Horse Pike. And you heard, it's an existing one-story commercial building, this is the middle rear, existing slash recovers duplex in the, in the front of the site. There is one driveway access, as, as far, roughly as far away from the intersection as it can be, that goes up to a parking area near the bike shop. That's about close to flying, which I think is adequate, given the limited trips in and out of this site. But I did discuss with, with your professionals about possibly doing a bit of a bump out within the project site to allow for two-way traffic, or at least a car to sort of pull over one of the car pulls and just in the rare instance of a possible conflict there, although in time, the king's been owning this site, there has been conflict with that circulation. But there is also a full shoulder on Black Horse Pike, south side, so that allows those to sort of be able to sit and pull in. But you take a little safer, we had some, some room there for circulation. There's adequate room for the parking that the site demands, as you heard, it's really maybe one or two spaces at most that's needed for the bike, bike shop, and he's generally getting, you know, one bike dropped off at a time. So they chop off their bike, they need a customization, and they come pick it up. So it's not a lot of customer traffic coming in, in and out of here, so one at a time and that's relatively minimal. The three bedrooms and duplex in total would require three and a half spaces according to RSIAS. But there's room to accommodate what the bike shop needs, what the residential needs, demands according to RSIAS. Those, those trips combined for those uses also would not come anywhere close to a rise in the DMT permits specifically, either five hundred trips a day or a hundred trips in a peak hour, but we're not anywhere near that, so I don't think there's any DMT approval required to maintain that existing driveway. Rear of the site, wood, so there's, there's a six-foot-high fence along the western boundary, we're adjacent with the RGPR zone, residential single bounded development, there's a six-foot-high wood fence along there, western boundary, and the rear portion of the site, wood, that makes it so.
Joe, does the fact that it's been functioning with this mixed use and the duplex since at least nineteen ninety-eight support our request for variance relief?
It's a, yeah, I mean, in, in essence, we've sort of tested the functionality of the site, can, can it kind of accommodate those uses? As Rich said, we really need two use variances technically, one is to permit the duplex in this zone where it's not permitted, although it does, it does permit other residential types of uses. And also to permit two principal uses, because the bike shop and the duplex are really two principal uses. So use variance is required for that. So as Rich said, I mean, the, the existing condition is just demonstrating, speak to that site stability, that part of the variance. And that, that is a part of the special reason that would allow you to grant the variance. Also, the RGC zone, the regional growth commercial zone, permits a variety of commercial uses, retail establishments, business and professional offices, personal service uses, eating and drinking establishments, and other similar uses. Those uses all would have impacts in my view that are the same or more than what's contemplated, what these uses comply. And for those reasons, we think the site's particularly suited. The other part of the use variance obviously is identifying purposes of zoning that would be advanced. We identify the following purpose, we can use all, purpose C, seats to provide active like, you know, open space. Again, the layout of this site hasn't existed, but at least a significant portion of the site has developed.
Approximately a little over point seven acre, correct, Joe?
Correct, yes, and, and, you know, I'd say about a third of the site's undeveloped, so most of it should. That allows us to screen that parking because the fence is hanging, it allows us to screen this parking area in the center from those adjacent uses. So there's a blurred area along the eastern boundary and, and along some part of the property. Purpose G speaks of providing sufficient space and perfect locations for a variety of uses. We believe this is appropriate location for the combination uses. And purpose N encourages coordination and land development with a view towards a more efficient use of land, which we believe this is an efficient use of land, is demonstrating a productive use of the land. Whereas by comparison, some of the permitted uses might struggle with the unique shape of, of property and possible restrictions to the access being close to the intersection and interstate. So we, we believe this is an appropriate and efficient use of the land.
But in theory, under those uses, Joe, I mean, you could put McDonald's here.
In theory, yes, yes, you could have much more intense uses in theory on the property, which would generate no traffic or delays more of the quality impacts, and that's part of the reason why we think this is, that really speaks to the negative problem where, where we don't see a substantial detriment to the public good. Because it's an existing use, I don't believe that the public would perceive any deviation here, it's what they're used to seeing. And also I think it's a very low intensity of the use, despite the deviation on the duplex and the deviation on two uses, they're both relatively low intensity, low trip generator, low traffic generation. And as you heard, you know, all that activity for the bike shop happens inside the site, so it really indicates any potential for delays there. Likewise, I think that speaks to the second point of the negative criteria. There's no substantial impact to the tenant purpose of your zoning plan. Again, this is very low intensity, it's consistent in character with other permitted uses, consistent in character with other properties along this intersection of Black Horse Pike, which are a mix of residential and commercial. So for those reasons, we think it would satisfy the positive negative criteria for use variance. Being that it's particularly suited, with advanced purposes of zoning, there's no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment of rights.
And Joe, we don't get to tell the board and the professionals what to do, but in the condition of the approval that if the commercial use changes from the low-intensity use to something else, that new commercial use would have to come back for either a waiver of site plan or site plan approval, sufficiently protects the board?
I, I, I do, I think that the, the sensible nexus there is, we're reporting that this is a very low-intensity based on the use and operations for this bike shop. And necessarily, if we had a different user there, there might be concern by the board that that user has more of a traffic demand, more of a parking demand than what this user has. So I think it'd be appropriate for the board to have the opportunity to consider that. They may find this site still particularly suited for that use, but it's at least a perfect given opportunity and I think that adequately protects them.
Told you I'd keep it brief.
Okay, let's just go to Adam's report right away.
Sure, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, I think the applicant did a great job actually providing testimony on this and what we're looking at tonight, so. It is to legalize, the variance is to legalize the two-unit duplex and the use variance is also needed for the, permit the two principal uses on the same lot in this zone, in the RGC zone. I think there was testimony given as to the positive and the negative criteria for both, I think it was given well and I do agree. This site is particularly suited for the two uses. This is very low intensity, the one thing I'll ask, have any neighbors complained, has there been any complaints or anything like that over the years?
Gene?
Nobody's complained about noise, any kind of issues, nothing like that, okay. So again, it's, it's a very low-intensity commercial use up against the residential, doesn't cause issues, doesn't really impact the, the zone scheme or the zoning plan as laid out in our ordinances. The only thing, going through my letter in section four, the only thing that I did not hear testimony on was as far as trash. Joe, I don't know if you touched on that?
I don't know, yeah, so, so the, the, obviously residential uses have regular rolling trash recycling cans as does the bike shop. They don't generate any significant amount of trash, cardboard boxes, they're not getting old motorcycles. It's really somebody bringing their bike there and then having it pieced out on as customization, so it really is residential in character, so they're using rolling trash cans as well.
It's picked up by township, correct, Joe?
Correct, yeah, that's my understanding, yes.
Perfect. Are there ADA stalls on site right now?
There is not.
Okay, would you be able to put in one ADA stall, just since the business is technically open to the public?
I think that's appropriate, yes.
Okay. The last thing on here is the sign, the sign out front. The sign is currently in the right-of-way, we would ask for that sign to be moved back onto your property and to abide by the two-foot requirement to the right-of-way line?
We've already asked the tenant to move the sign.
Perfect. So that, that's an agreed-upon condition?
Yes, so your condition is moving on to our site?
Moving on to our site and abide by the two-foot requirement to the right-of-way line, it can be no closer than that.
Yep.
And again, they spoke very well to the positive and negative criteria, I have nothing else.
To the chair.
Good.
Adam, how about, I noticed, like, how about when they're coming out of the driveway, how about at the owner's expense, they put a no-left-hand turn into the intersection?
Absolutely, I, I think that's appropriate to put a sign up, absolutely.
So it would be, it would be the owner's expense to put it up and maintain it?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, because of the intersection, I don't know, the quirky, quirky where the wah-wah is, you really don't want people turning into the intersection.
I agree completely.
So we just say no-left-hand turn into the intersection.
Absolutely, I agree, and I, I believe they also have agreed, like, you know, Joe was saying, kind of put in a little bit of an offshoot inside the site.
So another car could get in if necessary.
I believe it was also a request to, for a waiver of site plan?
Yes.
Also a waiver of sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, just so you don't have to come back for that one. The applicant has agreed to the condition set forth in the dissertation provided by the planner by letter dated March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, further indicated that they would obtain approval or waiver from NJDOT for the no-left-hand turn into the intersection coming out of the project. The applicants also agree that as a condition of the granting the current commercial use, that if there is a change in the use, that they would come back before the board, the appropriate board, for any relief that's necessary. And the planners also went through a bit of testimony with respect to the negative versus positive criteria, planner indicating his recommendation was that the positive criteria outweighed the negative criteria. So before the board, you would have to accept a motion to approve the condition set forth on the record.
Members of...
I'm sorry, subject to Pine Lands approval. I'm sorry, that pending, it was pending Pine Lands issue, something Pine Lands approval. Very sorry, Mr. Chairman, that was important.
Members of the board, your pleasure in regards to application twenty-five dash zero four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Cole Vita.
Yes, it's operated in that fashion for nearly thirty years, and the applicant satisfied the positive cri, and positive and negative criteria, yes.
Ms. Fazano?
I voted yes for the same reasons.
Mr. Hefner?
No.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes, I say yes, for the same reason, Mr. Cole Vita.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I stated by Mr. Cole Vita.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kamisky?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Cole Vita. And Mr. Kozak.
You are approved.
Thank you very much.
It's never going to stop me.
I'm sorry, I...
Our public portion, is there a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. All's a favor? Opposed? The ayes have it?